Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, February 18th, 2005. City Council meetings every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Our meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public who are unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, please call the role.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruelhan, Labang, Ledl, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vitigoso, White, Zane, Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me recognize Council Member Perry for a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am here with Molly Lowry and my colleague Wendy Gruel, and I'm laughing because I said to Molly, "You want to have some of the folks who came with her today just come up and stand with her," and it looks like 20 percent of the room just stood up. But that's just a testament to who Molly is and how much people love her and appreciate her, and it's with mixed emotions that I am making this presentation today because Molly, who's the founding executive director of the LAMP community, is retiring after 20 years of service with LAMP. She has worked tirelessly with people who are homeless since 1978. As the executive director of the Ocean Park Community Center in Santa Monica, Molly was founder of the Sojourn Battered Women's Shelter, Stepping Stone Youth Crisis Shelter, Turning Point Homeless Shelter, and in addition to all that, she organized several city and countywide coalitions for people who are homeless. In 1985, Molly founded and developed the Los Angeles Men's Place on San Julian in Skid Row, a drop-in center for adults diagnosed with serious mental illness who are also homeless. Within a few years, the name of the organization was changed to LAMP as 18 shelter beds were made available to the growing population of homeless women with mental illness. On Crocker Street, Molly launched LAMP Communities as a bed village residence with four business enterprises. Many of the people who were there with her in the beginning are current members or are still members of the LAMP community and are employees of her many business enterprises. She is a friend, a friend in the truest sense of the word. Not just a friend, though, but a valuable, valuable, valuable partner who gives of herself to all those who are in need, even at the expense of her own health. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize her publicly because losing her creates a big, big tear in our universe here in Central City East. And I know that all the good work that she has done will continue to resonate, that she has prepared those who have taken her place to continue her good work and meet the high standards that she has set. The bar is very high, the compassion that she has is significant, and I want to say, Molly, yes, you're going to be missed, and you will absolutely never be forgotten. And I would like for Ms. Gruel to say a few words before we have Molly come up.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, for letting me join you in this presentation. And I was trying to figure out what word could describe Molly Lowry. And Molly and I met in 1985 when she started the first component of LAMP. And we talked often about people, leaders and committed and dedicated, but Molly has been an angel for this city. Molly is someone who risked her life in many instances to care for people who had no one else to care for them, who she sat with day and night, weekends, you name it. Molly was there for her clients. She just wasn't the executive director of this program. She was sometimes their parent, their sister or brother, whatever it was, you were the individual who gave them hope and that they knew that there was someone who cared for them in this city, in a city sometimes that is huge and not very compassionate for the issues of homelessness. And Molly left the city, we were just talking, in 1995 to go to Bishop and take care of herself and start a little bit anew, and then there became challenges at LAMP. And Molly said, "I fought hard to make sure LAMP succeeded, and so I'm going to come back. I'm going to come back and I'm going to rededicate my life to those individuals." And the people you see behind you, I know many of them would acknowledge that she may have saved their life by the programs that she established. And we had hard-fought battles in Central City East where people did not believe that the facilities that Molly was developing were appropriate for that community. And yet, we have some of those same opponents. I mean, we went through lawsuits who stand today and say that LAMP is one of the best programs in providing jobs and mental health services for the homeless. And so, Molly, it is with a heavy heart as well that we see you leave Los Angeles, but as she said today, she's working on the plant and homelessness. She's still going to be around and is always going to be our conscience to say, "Let's be angels for those homeless." But it's really quite an honor to acknowledge you today and say thank you from all of us here in the City Council.
And before we have Molly come up and speak, I just want to say, you know, Molly not only touched lives, but she produced in ways that are tangible and will continue to exist long after we're all gone. She introduced the harm reduction model of intervention to build a strategy for a lifelong support community. She prepared and acquired and funded and fought for the LAMP Lodge, this 50-unit permanent supportive housing apartment building with more than 100 additional units of permanent supportive housing throughout with collaborations of housing and other nonprofit agencies. The flagship building on San Julian was renovated to allow privacy for women to shower with restroom facilities. And in 2004, I just want you to know that LAMP was chosen as an innovative model by the Federal Interagency Council to End Homelessness. Molly even trained LAPD officers to deal appropriately and to deal with people who are diagnosed with mental illness to heighten their sensitivity towards this vulnerable population. And so, I want you to know all that because not only do we love her, but she leaves a vast body of work for us to enjoy the benefits of. And so, with that, I would like to say, I want to introduce you to somebody you'll probably never, never meet another person like this in your life. Her name is Molly Lowry.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, February 18th, 2005. City Council meetings every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Our meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public who are unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Labang, Ledl, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vitor, Goso, White, Zine, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me recognize Council Member Perry for a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am here with Molly Lowry and my colleague Wendy Gruel and I'm laughing because I said to Molly, "You want to have some of the folks who came with her today just come up and stand with her?" And it looks like 20% of the room just stood up. But that's just a testament to who Molly is and how much people love her and appreciate her. And it's with mixed emotions that I am making this presentation today because Molly, who's the founding executive director of the Lamp Community, is retiring after 20 years of service with Lamp. She has worked tirelessly with people who are homeless since 1978. As the executive director of the Ocean Park Community Center in Santa Monica, Molly was founder of the Sojourn Battered Women's Shelter, Stepping Stone Youth Crisis Shelter, Turning Point Homeless Shelter, and in addition to all that, she organized several city and county-wide coalitions for people who are homeless. In 1985, Molly founded and developed the Los Angeles Men's Place on San Julian in Skid Row, a drop-in center for adults diagnosed with serious mental illness who are also homeless. Within a few years, the name of the organization was changed to Lamp as 18 shelter beds were made available to the growing population of homeless women with mental illness. On Crocker Street, Molly launched Lamp Communities as a bed village residence with four business Many of the people who were there with her in the beginning are current members or are still members of the Lamp Community and are employees of her many business enterprises. She is a friend, a friend in the truest sense of the word. Not just a friend, though, but a valuable, valuable, valuable partner who gives of herself to all those who are in need, even at the expense of her own health. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize her publicly because losing her creates a big, big tear in our universe here in Central City East. And I know that all the good work that she has done will continue to resonate, that she has prepared those who have taken her place to continue her good work and meet the high standards that she has set. The bar is very high. The compassion that she has is significant. And I want to say, Molly, yes, you're going to be missed and you will absolutely never be forgotten. And I would like for Ms. Gruel to say a few words before we have Molly come up.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, for letting me join you in this presentation. And I was trying to figure out what word could describe Molly Lowry. And Molly and I met in 1985 when she started the first component of Lamp. We talked often about people leaders and committed and dedicated, but Molly has been an angel for this city. Molly is someone who risked her life in many instances to care for people who had no one else to care for them, who she sat with day and night, weekends, you name it. Molly was there for her clients. She just wasn't the executive director of this program. She was sometimes their parent, their sister or brother, whatever it was, you were the individual who gave them hope and that they knew that there was someone who cared for them in this city, in a city sometimes that is huge and not very compassionate for the issues of homelessness. And Molly left the city, we were just talking, in 1995 to go to Bishop and take care of herself and start a little bit anew. And then there became challenges at Lamp. And Molly said, "I fought hard to make sure Lamp succeeded, and so I'm going to come back. I'm going to come back and I'm going to rededicate my life to those individuals." And the people you see behind you, I know many of them would acknowledge that she may have saved their life by the programs that she established. And we had hard-fought battles in Central City East where people did not believe that the facilities that Molly was developing were appropriate for that community. And yet, we have some of those same opponents. I mean, we went through lawsuits who stand today and say that Lamp is one of the best programs in providing jobs and mental health services for the homeless. And so Molly, it is with a heavy heart as well that we see you leave Los Angeles, but as she said today, she's working on the plant and homelessness. She's still going to be around and is always going to be our conscience to say, "Let's be angels for those homeless." But it's really quite an honor to acknowledge you today and say thank you from all of us here in the City Council.
And before we have Molly come up and speak, I just want to say, you know, Molly not only touched lives, but she produced in ways that are tangible and will continue to exist long after we're all gone. She introduced the harm reduction model of intervention to build a strategy for a lifelong support community. She prepared and acquired and funded and fought for the Lamp Lodge, this 50-unit permanent supportive housing apartment building with more than 100 additional units of permanent supportive housing throughout with collaborations of housing and other nonprofit agencies. The flagship building on San Julian was renovated to allow privacy for women to shower with restroom facilities. And in 2004, I just want you to know that Lamp was chosen as an innovative model by the Federal Interagency Council to End Homelessness. Molly even trained LAPD officers to deal appropriately and to deal with people who are diagnosed with mental illness to heighten their sensitivity towards this vulnerable population. And so I want you to know all that because not only do we love her, but she leaves a vast body of work for us to enjoy the benefits of. And so with that, I would like to say, I want to introduce you to somebody you'll probably never, never meet another person like this in your life. Her name is Molly Lowry. Thanks very, very much, Jan Perry and Wendy Gruel. I really appreciate all the nice words and this honor for Lamp Community. I guess I want to just say that, you know, we've heard the phrase that it takes a village to raise a child and all that. It really takes a community to make a lamp work. And these are a lot of the folks that are making it work and are going to carry on the work and make the Skid Row area a decent place to live for low-income folks who are struggling with disabilities. And I hope the city will do whatever they can to support it. Thank you very much.
We will.
Okay. Come on up here, Pathfinders. An impressive group of athletes. And I had the privilege of watching them play about a week ago, wasn't it?
Yes.
And it was an amazing game. They were smooth, they were relaxed, and they were fluid out there on the court. And I'm pleased to present to you the Fremont Varsity Basketball Team, the Pathfinders. Can we give them a big hand? This year, the Fremont Pathfinders finished their season as the Coliseum League Champions and finished an impressive third in the entire state of California, according to the latest rankings. That is amazing. Fremont beat every team, every team that they played in their league this year with a league record of 10-0, and they are headed to the Los Angeles City Championship Division Finals today, today. Tonight, they will play Poli in their first game of the championship. These young men have displayed incredible skill and dedication to their team and to their school throughout the season. I am proud of them and I want them to know that we, as a city, are proud of them, their school, and their coaches. And I want to take, let's give them another hand. Come on, don't be shy. And I want to salute each one of you on your extraordinary achievement and recognize each one of you, some of your parents watch this tonight, they're going to say your name real quick. Avery Martin, Chance Morris, Danny Williams, Ivan Rogers, Jacques Streeter, Jeremy Hazel, Lindsay Robinson, Mark Hill, Reggie Quarker, Robert Coleman, Robert Johnson. And I will give you certificates in the back, but I wanted to let each and every one of you know that you are representing our city and you make us very proud. And I want to say a special thanks to Robert James Boyd III, the Athletic Director, Sam Sullivan, Head Basketball Coach, and George McLinn, Assistant Basketball Coach, for their commitment and dedication to this team. Your support and dedication has brought the Pathfinders to these great heights. I also want to thank, well, Larry's not, okay. Mrs. Diaz?
Denny.
Mrs. Denny?
Diaz-Denny.
Diaz-Denny, Assistant Principal.
Principal.
Principal. And Jack Bartucci, Jack Bartucci, okay, Jack Bartucci, got a long name, Assistant Principal for their very, very active support of the team. And I want to say, I know you're going to do well tonight. I want to say good luck and make sure you show them what Fremont is made of. You guys, anybody want to say anything?
I would just like to thank everyone for having us down here. It's really an honor for us to be here and take part in something like this. And these young men come to school, they work hard every day, they maintain their grades. And we, as a coaching staff, we really want to thank our administration for the support that they give us and Councilwoman Perry for the outstanding support that she gives to all her constituents. And we really thank you and appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And we're going to take these in the back. I have one more team if they're ready. You guys ready? Okay, great. Okay, and you guys, we'll meet you in the back and have the Lamp group hold and we'll do that one. We'll take a big, nice picture tonight. Okay. Ladies? This is a great day for the 9th District. The Jefferson High School Girls Basketball Team, they're here with us today. Let's give them a hand. Jefferson High School Basketball Team has had an outstanding performance this year. This year, under the leadership of Coach Hughes, Coach Page, and Assistant Coach Hatley, the Jefferson Democrats have experienced their best season since they won the championships in 1993. Thanks to the teamwork, determination, and impressive skills of this team, the Democrats' Girls Basketball Team has finished second place in the Coliseum League and earned a fourth seeding in the upcoming playoffs. That's impressive. These young women have played some amazing basketball and have made their school and our city proud as well. I have certificates for all of you as well, but I want to say your names. Daisy Gomez, Dinitia Smith, Erlinda Dum, Shamika Bryant, Rosa Escaval, Marcia Aranya, Kiyoshana Walker, Dominique Carter, Kiana Scott, Brittany McCrery, and we have Quixana Harper. Additionally, their coach, Curtis Hughes, gave me some impressive statistics about four members of the team. Dominique Carter earned first-team All-League with an impressive 21 average points a game. Wow. And leading the league in assists. Kiana Scott also earned first-team All-League averaging 19 points a game. Brittany McCrery earned a second-team All-League averaging 14 points and three steals per game. And Quixana Harper was third in rebounding, averaging an impressive 16 rebounds a game and seven points a game. That's amazing. Let's give them all a big hand. Congratulations, Coaches Curtis Hughes and Jeffrey Page for earning the title of Co-Coaches of the Year. And with that, I'd like to turn the mic over to Coach Curtis Hughes to say a few words about this exceptional team.
Good morning, Your Honor, Mary. And Jan Perry, it's an honor to be here right now. On behalf of our coaching staff and our school at Jefferson High School, we are so proud that you all invited us to come down. I am very pleased and very impressed with this team this year on how well they came together. We started off a little rough early. A lot of teams thought we would finish last, but I guess we proved some of them wrong. You know, Manu, I endorse it. They thought we would finish last, they thought they would finish first, but these young ladies are some warriors. They fought so hard and I'm so proud of my coaching staff because my coaching staff, he's my right hand. A lot of times I'll be busy and he stepped in, he took care of business this year. And I want to thank my entire Girls Basketball Team and Jefferson High School staff, the members, and the community for being behind us this year. I also have my coach, I want him to say something also, Coach Jeffrey Page.
Hello, how you doing? I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about our team. My name is Coach Jeffrey Page, Assistant Coach to Curtis Hughes. Our program consists of three coaches, myself, Coach Hughes, and Coach Hatley. In our program, our first job is making sure our girls have the grades to play basketball. Coach Hatley is in charge of our report cards and tutoring and homework, and if any of our girls need any help, he's always there. I am in charge of preparing our girls for basketball, conditioning, fundamentals, and plays. We have a program for the city of L.A. called Girls Play L.A., so we keep our girls busy year-round. Our big brother, Coach Curtis Hughes, takes care of everything else. He's a master at coaching and behind-scenes stuff. And as a team, we have been very successful. I am proud to say that not only are our girls great athletes, we are tops at Jefferson High School in grade point averages this year and last year during our championship run, and I am very proud of these young ladies. Thank you.
I'd like to bring up Daisy Gomez. She wants to talk on behalf of our girls.
Good morning. I wrote a speech on behalf of the Lady Demos. And on behalf of the basketball team, we would like to express our gratitude to Jan Perry and her entire staff for inviting us here today. This season was truly an unforgettable lifetime experience, an experience which brought forth many challenging encounters as well as valuable lessons for the players. One of the most challenging things to do was staying focused and well-disciplined. However, with a lot of work and unyielding support from our coaches, the team was able to remain focused and we were able to improve our performances, which enabled us to become a stronger team. Throughout the season, we were consistent in our game tactics, which led to many of our victories. Despite the victories, however, we also had some downfalls but maintained high spirits and kept a positive outlook on things. Furthermore, we learned many valuable lessons. We learned to work in unity as a team, to be persistent, and above all, to give our all regardless of situation, to never quit and to hold our heads up high victorious or not. We are greatly fortunate and grateful to have lived this one-time episode and to be able to stand here today and be appreciated for our vigorous work and determination. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Before proceeding to the next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Gruel for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I appreciate you letting me introduce a very special group of young people from Kester Avenue Elementary School. If we could have them all stand in the back. They came out all the way from the valley and the rain this morning to see the City Council. I told them they'd be on TV tonight, but I visited their school and their principal, Sandy Barrett, just, I think, less than three weeks ago, and I made the offer for them to come down to City Hall. I had given them some books for their library. And you can tell a good principal, she was on the phone, ready to go, and brought those kids down here. So they're very interested in city government. I think we have a few future City Council members in the group. So thank you, Kester. You're a great school and we're glad to have you here in City Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
And for our next and final presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Tony Cardenas.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Good morning, Los Angeles. I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to present this resolution of the Los Angeles City Council congratulating the Jewish community on the occasion of the 11th Siyum Hashas Abdaf Yomi. And rather than give you all the wheras's and arthaus, I'm going to ask Stan and Brian to explain it in more detail. But one of the things I'd like to point out that we're celebrating, the 11th cycle, which it takes seven and a half years to complete, and it is done on one page a day. And when I saw all of this and learned something about it, and I did learn quite a bit, I said to myself, "Ay, ay, ay, I can't explain this to Angelinas or Oivee." But the bottom line is, I think we have two individuals here who are very dedicated to the community and very dedicated to this issue and who can explain it much, much better than me. So we'll start with our friend, Stan Criteau. Stan?
I want to thank the City Council for giving us this certificate. And we plan on having a couple of thousand people at the Disney Concert Hall on March the 1st, which is the day that it'll be a nationwide hookup. And I'm going to ask Brian Kaplan here to talk now.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, thank you very much. On behalf of the Goodish Israel of American California, we gratefully accept your acknowledgement of this wonderful opportunity. Quite frankly, of course, you're all invited to our event through our associate Kobe King. I'm sure he'll, if he hasn't already, given you the details. But just something that I want to share with you, what's happening here today at the City Council is a concept of shared goals, shared efforts, in order to affect a shared vision. In effect, this Abdaf Yomi program is exactly the same thing. The hundreds and thousands of participants around the country have sacrificed an hour or two of their day on a daily basis for seven and a half years. Their shared goal and shared vision is their own spiritual growth by studying the ancient but yet living text of the Tomwood, and in effect, not only to make themselves better, but to make their own community and the community at large, and this great city and this great country that we live in, a very much more moral society with values that, quite frankly, this country was founded on. So once again, on behalf of everyone, we thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And with that, I present to you as the representatives on this matter in this community of Los Angeles, this resolution from the city of Los Angeles, signed by all of the council members and our mayor, James Hahn. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. And Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Let's suspend the consent items and come back to general public comment.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items 1 through 18 are before us. Public hearings have been held on these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? If there's no request for specials, let's open the roll on Items 1 through 18. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 19 through 32 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
19 through 32 are before us without objection, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Requests for specials on 19 through 32, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Mr. Clerk.
That would leave you with public comment.
Okay. And the council calls forward at this time, Nozada Flores, Susana Cortez, Reynaldo Salas, Maria Rodriguez, and Alma Ramirez.
Oh, buenos dias. Si, buenos dias.
Me nombre es Susana Cortez. Venimos representando al Sur Central Farmers.
Good morning. My name is Susana Cortez. We come to represent the South Central Farmers.
Para manifestarles que nos dejen por favor ese lugar. Que lo estamos trabajando.
Please let us have that space, that we are working that space.
Sembrando nuestras verduras para llevarlas a nuestra mesa.
Sowing our seeds to take fruits to our tables.
Y también para nuestra familia que coman saludablemente.
And also for our families so that they could have healthy food and eat healthy.
Y enseñamos a nuestros hijos nuestras costumbres, nuestras raíces, y de dónde vienen nuestros alimentos.
And showing our children our customs, our roots, and where the healthy food comes from.
Y así mantenemos a nuestras familias unidas.
And that's how we maintain our families united.
Te espero. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Maria Rodriguez.
My name is Maria Rodriguez.
Yo represento al Sur Central Farmers, 41 y Alameda.
I represent South Central Farmers, 41st and Alameda.
Yo les quiero pedir a los concejales que hoy que tienen un poco de tiempo, nos ayuden.
I want to ask the council members, now that you have a little bit of time, to I want to ask the council members, now that you have a little bit of time, to please help us.
Nos ayuden a mantener ese lugar porque nos sirve como un parque, como todo, para nuestros nietos, nuestros hijos.
Please help us keep that space at place because it helps us like having a park for our children or grandchildren.
Y es una parte muy segura para nuestros hijos, para nuestros nietos.
And it's a very safe place for our children and our grandchildren.
Gracias, es todo.
Thank you. That's all.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers and city of Los Angeles. Today, I, Alma Ramirez, a law-abiding Mexican and a non-butt kisser, would like to elaborate about who are the two main players in the city and actually across the country and who are affecting our socioeconomic status as a law-abiding Mexicans, and they are the Jewish mob and the Nazi and gringo who are guilty as charged. Some say it's a bit unfetched and I'm being erroneous, but quite frankly, that is not true. What we have seen--
Ma'am, can I ask you to please just focus your comments on matters within the city's jurisdiction?
We are in the city's jurisdiction.
No, we're geographically in the city's jurisdiction--
I'm not the butt kisser here. You are charged as guilty as well for cooperating in collusion with these groups--
No, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to speak to a city issue, a city problem.
--who have helped Mexicans and Latinos. These are, when it comes to Mexicans in poverty, it is a city issue. It also violates public safety and welfare. Have you ever participated or assisted and helped the Mexicans come out of poverty and degradation? No. You're helping the Jewish communities further dehumanize and impoverish Mexicans.
Okay, ma'am, I'm going to have to cut you off unless you speak to a specific city issue.
What issue are we talking about? Which one would you like me to elaborate, since I'm not the butt kisser?
This is a general public comment. This is your time, but I need to speak to a specific city issue.
This is a public comment, and I am elaborate on the Jewish mob who are exploiting Mexicans and Latinos.
Okay, I'm going to have to cut you off at this time. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused to leave at eleven-thirty on Wednesday, February twenty-third for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Ms. Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on Friday, March fourth, for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. That excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on Friday, March fourth, for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Grul moves, and Mr. Cardenas is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. It's the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just wanted to let folks know today that we dedicated Celia Cruz Square at Hollywood and Argyle with members of the Cruz family with shouts of azúcar and much joy. The rain did not put a damper at all on it, but no doubt Celia was looking down, and folks can go to Hollywood and Argyle. It's one of the most visited stars on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, but it's the first Latino square in Hollywood to ever be named as such, but the queen of salsa will live very strong, so we encourage people not just to walk down there, but to dance through the square and enjoy it. Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I'd just like to mention that tomorrow morning, I'll be having my Saturday morning office hours from eight-thirty to ten-thirty at the Glendale Bakery in Foothill, on Foothill Boulevard, and encourage residents who are interested to come on down. Thank you.
And to drive safely. We expect a lot of rain this weekend. Ms. Hahn?
Mr. President, colleagues, if there's no objection, I would actually like to reconsider item twenty and then continue it.
Okay. Let's open the roll on reconsideration of item number twenty.
Let's look at it first.
Let's, the roll is open, our reconsideration. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, item twenty is now reconsidered. Is there any objection to continuing this item? Seeing none?
To--
For what period of time is Hahn? Thirty days? Thirty days without objection. Any other announcements today?
I'm just going to announce that tomorrow at eight o'clock, we're going to be meeting for our day of service and expect about, if it's not raining, about sixteen-hundred people in Bull Heights on First and Chicago. And looking forward to seeing everybody from Bull Heights and the fourteenth council manic district there.
Great. And any other announcements? If not, this is a President's Day weekend. Many festivities going on, a lot of rain coming down these next couple of days on top of the numerous storms we had at the beginning of the year. So, folks, please be careful out there. I know building and safety and the fire department are on alert for streets and trees and even homes that may be jeopardized. And if there's anything further, do we have adjourned motions today? Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask today, colleagues, that we adjourn in memory of David G. Morgan, who passed away on February ninth of this year. Mr. Morgan was a frequent visitor to City Hall. We met a number of times at my office hours and was somebody who was very active in the Hollywood community. He was owner of the Morgan Camera Shop in Hollywood, which was established in nineteen thirty-two. He always acted as an advocate for individual liberties and property rights of the individual. For many years, he fought against the Community Redevelopment Agency and founded the Better Government Association in Hollywood. He had a deep interest in science, philosophy, religion, and the workings of the human mind and his willingness to share his knowledge. He always had long, interesting discussions with people who often became his friends. He was a longtime member and past treasurer and director of the Adventures Club of Los Angeles. He was a ham radio operator for fifty years and worked in various industries as a consultant in the chemistry of blood testing, food chemistry, and photographic chemistry. He was born and spent all of his life in Los Angeles, attending L.A. City Schools, graduating from John Marshall High School before attending Pomona College, where he received his BA degree, and then went to the University of Wisconsin to get both the Masters of Science and Doctor of Science degrees in the field of biochemistry. Sometimes we were on different sides of the issue, but I always enjoyed sitting down with David, and he would bring in voluminous writings that he made, stacks and stacks of analysis of the ins and outs of city government, and would often walk in the neighborhood in Hollywood to help organize small shop owners against what he saw was the incursion of big government. But he was somebody who was well-loved even by those who sometimes were on the opposite side from him, and he's going to be dearly missed in Hollywood. He is survived by his brother, James, and we hope that David, who made such an impact in Hollywood, will rest in peace.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I'd like us to adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Fred Brown, who passed away last Friday at the age of fifty-nine. Fred Brown started the Fred Brown Recovery Services in San Pedro in the eighties and has been helping drug addicts and alcoholics turn their lives around. Fred was born and raised in East L.A. He joined the Army and served in Vietnam. And years after he returned from Vietnam as a drug addict, he decided to change his life and soon thereafter began helping others to change their lives. Mark Malone, the program administrator at the center, said, "The good this man has done, I can't even express. I credit him for saving my life." He was dedicated to the recovery center, but he also enjoyed riding horses, fishing, and riding his Harley. He is survived by his wife, Roxy, his daughter, Elena, six stepchildren, and nine grandchildren. Services will take place at Point Furman Park in San Pedro on Saturday, February twenty-six, from nine to four, nine a.m. to four p.m.
Other tributes? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Thomas Ormiston. Tom was an Amtrak conductor and one of the eleven people who died on the January twenty-six MetroLink commuter rail derailment. Tom was fifty-eight years old and a resident in Northridge. Tom truly loved his job, considered both coworkers and passengers an extension of his family. He was just two years away from retirement, looked forward to spending long days fishing and hiking and pursuing his hobby of collecting knives. Tom is survived by his wife, Roberta Ann Ormiston, daughter Carrie Davis and her husband Sean, daughter Christie Rodriguez and husband Phil, parents Floyd and Marion Ormiston, mother-in-law Renee Hall and Jacomumba, brother Tim Ormiston, wife Peggy, sister Tia Long and Darnell, two nieces, two nephews, five grandchildren, and one granddaughter. Services are already held for Tom on January thirty-first at Forest Lawn, but any donations would like to be made in his honor to the National Alzheimer's Disease Association. May Tom Ormiston live and rest in peace.
Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, I have two adjourned motions. The first one is for Mr. Arnold Dubin, passed away February tenth. Arnold Dubin, fifty-three, died in a plane crash in central California. He was the founder of Deal Builder Incorporated, which created the first software program for the construction industry, also the owner-manager of Atrium Building in Tarzana. Arnold will be deeply missed in the Tarzana community since he was one of the business people on Ventura Boulevard, actively involved in community issues. He was a five-year member of the Tarzana Improvement Association, vice president for the last three years. It is a great loss for the Tarzana community. He is survived by his wife, Lois, daughter Emily, son Andrew, and numerous other relatives and friends. May Arnold Dubin rest in peace. The other adjourned motion is for Dr. Mae Jackson, passed away February eleventh. Dr. Jackson was the mayor of Waco, Texas. I met Dr. Mae Jackson at the National League of Cities. We served on the National Crime Prevention Steering Committee, just a wonderful lady. She was a plainspoken political who last year became the town's first elected black mayor. She died unexpectedly in Waco, leaving the community and her closest friends stunned. Dr. Jackson, sixty-three, died shortly before noon, Hillcrest Baptist Medical Center, where she had checked in with chest pains. She was remembered as a petite woman with an indomitable spirit who loved big hats and fast-raised horses and picking on me and other elected officials. She was remembered as a state-level Democratic Party insider who knew her own community inside and out. She was known for her asset wit and willingness to fight, but also for her attempt to unite Waco's races and social classes behind a common vision. Dr. Jackson had decades of experience as a social worker, Democratic activist, and community leader before she ran for district-run council seat in two thousand. It was that election that cemented her public reputation as a fighter. On the council, she was known for her unpredictable views and strong advocacy for her district. She fought for funding for a new city community center at Quinn Campus, formerly abandoned college campus in East Waco. Studied social work at Texas University, ultimately earning her doctorate. Worked for the National Council of Negro Women during the Civil Rights Movement of the sixties, then worked in a variety of social work jobs, including positions at the Methodist Home and the Waco Center for Youth. She retired several years ago from her social work practice. She was a great woman and we greatly missed. Dr. Jackson survived by her husband, Dillard, and by her grown children, Tammy Perry, Andrea Bearfield, and Ken Hall. Dr. Mae Jackson, a wonderful, wonderful lady who really united people of all religions, all races. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Villaregoza?
Mr. President, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of two individuals. Lena Floret Larson is the first. I'd like to adjourn in her memory. She passed away at the age of seventy-five. She was a lifelong resident of El Sarino. She had two sons, Randy and Ray Garcia, both of whom joined the Los Angeles Police Department. She's a member of the Calvary Chapel of Light Church in El Sarino. And also an adjourned motion in memory of Heidi Pingel. Heidi was born on November twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-nine, in Los Angeles. She grew up in Westchester and Hacienda Heights and graduated at the top of her class at Los Altos High School, where she excelled at tennis in Badminton, and she went on to UCLA, spending a semester at C, and graduated magna cum laude in Phi Beta Kappa. During college, she was active with Amnesty International and volunteered at women's shelters in South Los Angeles. And after college, she attended the University of Virginia Law School, interned with the U.S. Justice Department, Congress, battered women's shelters, and a law firm in Los Angeles. She began her legal career in California specializing in medical malpractice litigation, then moving to Dallas, Texas, to continue her practice. She was diagnosed with cancer and multiple endocrine neoplasia syndrome, or MENS, and battled these diseases for some years. Nineteen ninety-nine, when her doctors told her that she only had six months to live, she began to travel, taking trips to Tahiti, Bora Bora, Alaska, Europe, and all across the United States. Five years later, five years passed before her illness finally took her. During those five years, in addition to travel, she devoted her time to two things, working with other men's patients around the world and spending time with her friends and family. She was a unique and wonderful woman who always thought of herself, of others, and gave of herself. She will be sorely missed.
Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.